And basically waiting until we hear how much revenue is available. And there has been one application early on, but I think that's an holding pattern.
All right, thank you. Marie, anything from the county?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Jen, anything that burned it to us from city council? She's not on.
They were having trouble hearing us, and I think I fixed it.
Okay. All right, moving on. So now we move into new business. The first thing I want to talk, there's some chairs there in the corner. Somebody can help you grab one. The calendar for the remainder of the year, we're moving into the holidays. And our November 22 meeting is right there at Thanksgiving. Typically, we do not have that meeting. And then we have a December meeting scheduled for the 26th. I'm suggesting that we cancel those meetings. Courtney?
I would make a motion to cancel those meetings.
Do I have a motion to cancel those meetings?
For?
November 22, which is Thanksgiving, and December 26, which is Christmas.
Move to cancel the November 22 meeting and the December 26 meeting.
All right, well, second?
This is the 27th.
It's the November 22 and December 26.
December 27 is the Wednesday.
26.
That's Tuesday.
All right, 27, then. I'm sorry.
Cancel all.
Which means that we only have this meeting, we really only have two more scheduled meetings between now and end of the year. Okay, have a motion. Any discussion?
There's a second.
Can second it.
Any discussion? Have a roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Richter Olsen?
Yes.
Jen still can't hear us. I'm still trying to figure it out. Whistler?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move in now to our first design review on the illuminated sign design at 10 Robinson Lane. First thing we need to do is qualify the board. Does any member of the planning board have any expertise communication to disclose? Does any member feel that they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and the decision on the matter before the planning board? Has the matter been properly noticed as required by the red lot zoning regulations?
Yes.
Let the record indicate that the Red Lot City Planning Board has been called and qualified because of the matter at hand, that the matter is a quasi judicial in nature, and has been properly noticed. The first thing we'll do is we'll hear a report on the request on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Al. So fairly short staff report, kind of a standard staff report for this design review for replacing two internally illuminated signs for a name change from SBL Health to Intermountain Health at 10 Robinson Lane. Probably the thing to note the most is the change in the size, a decrease in the size of one of the signs. So from a nonconforming, legal nonconforming, to one that will now be in compliance with our zoning regs.
Basically, they're going to a smaller sign.
Hmm.
Okay. Does the applicant want to address the application? Is the applicant representative here?
She's online. Can you hear us and respond, Jessica? My first time using this.
We're having an internet issue, and I'm not sure what that does to the application.
Hello, I'm here.
Here she is.
Hi, sorry about that. I was having an issue getting off of unmute.
Then identify yourself, please.
My name is Jessica Norwick. I am the sign company that would be installing these new signs for Intermountain Health.
Okay. And do you have any comments or things you want to say on behalf of the request?
We are replacing signs, the monuments and a wall sign. They are both within code restrictions for square footage. The monument sign is internally illuminated, and then there is a wall sign that is also internally illuminated. They meet the Intermountain's new brand standards and what they would like their brand to represent in logo and color.
Okay. We'll come back at you with some questions, Jessica, so that'll be in a few minutes. So now, if there's anybody in the public either here in the room or online that wants to address border concerns of this application, now's your time to do that. Does anybody want to address the application? Make it easy. Online, is there anybody who wants to address the application? Hearing none? Okay, at this time, there'll be the opportunity for the members of the planning board to ask any questions, either of the city or the applicant. Who wants to start? Jess, you want to start?
I don't have any questions. That both the totality of the signs fall within our minimum standards. They seem to be, also follow the intent of focusing on the illumination of simply the messaging and not the backdrop, so it seems to be very little impact from a light pollution standpoint, so.
Okay. Jen, do you have any comments on this application?
No, I don't. They all seem, this application seems very straightforward to me, so I'm good.
Hey, Clarissa?
I was happy to see this application. They get it. The opaque background and the lighting of only the text was perfect and wonderfully done application. The only thing I saw was the property owner in, so property owner showed here in section 4.5 at 700 lighting, but I think we want to reference the outdoor advertising in that. So just an omission of something that should have been stated, I think. But the application was wonderful, and I think it's a great job.
Okay, Marie, do you got anything?
No comment. Looks great to me.
Sorry?
Looks good to me.
Good. Susan?
Looks fine to me, also.
Make it easy. I just had a question or clarification, Courtney. You said under your design review, chapter 4.6, that our current zoning does not lay out criteria for illuminated signs in commercial use districts. However, we've made some amendments and recommendations of councils. Are those the recommendations you're using here?
Those are not, since this was under our current zoning, we have to use our current zoning. Our current zoning does address commercial districts outside of the historic district.
I asked that question because this application falls within our recommendations to the council. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I forgot to ask, if Jessica's still on, I'd like to know. We know that the current regulations that illuminated signs are required to be extinguished or dimmed at business closing, but is that, is there a timer on these, or is there any reason or explanation why they might not be turned off after closing? What's the plan?
Jessica, you want to address that?
Yes, please. The signs will have photo cells on them, so they, when light hits them, they'll turn off. When it gets dark, they'll turn on and off.
I think the fact that it's a medical facility and you want to advertise 24/7. Okay, any other comments? Okay. Have we received any written comments at all?
Nope.
Any other additional comments from the applicant or the city?
No.
No.
Yay. Good start. I need a motion to approve.
I'm going to adopt staff report year 2023-04 signing fast with the amendment that we include in item number four.
So you moved to approve the staff report first, right?
Right.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion I need. Just approve the staff report, okay?
Yep.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Richter Olsen?
Yes.
Battle?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yeah.
Bloomer?
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to approve or deny the design review permit.
I'm going to approve the design review permit, R O B R 23-04. It's allowed for two internally illuminated signs located at 10 Robinson Lane with the following conditions that are cited, and only the in only one amendment, the number four.
Okay. Did you get the amendment, the number four?
Four for the outdoor advertising?
Let me cite, yeah, four dot six dot zero.
Got that?
Yep.
Do you need a second, please?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Do we really want that amendment in there?
Sorry?
Do we really want that amendment in there for the medical facilities? Has nothing to do with whether they're in a medical facility. Four dot six dot zero is merely our regulations for outdoor advertising. Why do you think it's included in the original staff report? I don't know. That's why I think it should be added.
That's why she added it. Okay?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Richter Olsen?
Yes.
Baddles?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes. Okay. Our second hearing of the conditional use of design review and new development on Cooper Avenue North. Have to requalify the board on this. Does any member of the planning board have any ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
Does any member feel they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and the decision on the matter before the planning board?
No.
No.
Has the matter been properly noticed as required by Red Lodge zoning regulations?
Yes.
Let the record indicate the Red Lodge City Planning Board has been called and qualified to hear the matter at hand, that the matter is quasi judicial in nature and has been properly noticed. Okay. Courtney, we hear report on the request on behalf of the city, please.
Thank you, Al. So this conditional use, our first conditional use of the year, surprisingly, after we've had about ten or twelve the last couple of years. So this conditional use and design review is for a proposed single-story, three-unit commercial building with a total three thousand square footage within the Red Lodge C U, our commercial mixed-use zoning district. The building will, is planned to house a screen printing wholesale bakery and an additional third commercial business. This project needs approval by the planning board for the following zoning issues: a design review for a new commercial building, a conditional use in the C two zoning district for construction of a building over three thousand square feet. That should actually say two thousand. The building is three thousand square feet. A conditional use in the C two zoning district for light industrial. There are fourteen conditions listed. See them out. Some of the adjacent land uses includes primarily more C two. There's some vacant lots, some residential, some commercial. Site characteristics, the lot is currently vacant and open. There's no street improvements such as sidewalks within this section of Cooper Avenue. There's some satellite imagery from twenty twenty-one, so it does show a stand of trees that used to be there. I think they may have been cut down. I don't know if they were completely removed. So some background, we did review this, this lot and an additional lot to the north of it for a proposed, for a proposed eight residential units. So it was reviewed and approved by the planning board in early twenty twenty-two, but that wasn't pursued. So since then, the current property owners have purchased two of those lots. There were no public comments. And then I only received comment from, from the fire district. I did not receive comments from the police or water, but I have talked to Jen about that property and he didn't seem to think there are any issues. And I haven't received a comment on this project from the historic preservation. She did respond to an email, but it, I was asking for more clarification, so it didn't really, wasn't specific to this project. It was more based on the last project. So nothing as of today. So staff analysis, A, consistent with the Red Lodge twenty twenty growth policy. There were ten findings in that, two conclusions, that this would be consistent with the growth policy. Compatibility, there are four findings and four conclusions. Minimizing adverse impact, four findings, three conclusions. Those questions, you're welcome to ask me later on. Minimize adverse environmental impacts, two findings, one conclusion that's compliant with environmental impact criteria. Impact of public facilities and services, three findings, one conclusion that won't have negative impact on public facilities. Hazard nuisance, three findings, one conclusion that this construction or this proposal is appropriate for light industrial in the vicinity of the area and compliance with other codes, one finding, one conclusion that they are in compliance. For our design review staff analysis, nothing really major, just a couple of things with the parking. There are five parking spaces being proposed in the lot and then an additional parking space in the rear for a total of six off-street parking spaces. One ADA space is included in that design, and I did try to, as I went through, I tried to reference the application sheets themselves. So if you see application site plan, section C, sheet one, that's usually in the bottom corner, just in case that was confusing. Two. Let my papers get stuck together. And then the landscape plan, the other one I'll comment is on the landscape plan. So for the size of this project, there are three over-story linden species which are approved in the urban forest management plan for the city. And then additional junipers and ornamental grasses are proposed as part of the landscape plan. And the lighting plan is also included in one of the application sheets. For the sign permit is included in this design review. I did add condition number seven to address for the third commercial, commercial operation, when they are, you know, renting out the space and ready to put up a sign, they need to contact the zoning administrator and have that third and final sign approved by the zoning administrator.
Thank you. All right. Now, if the applicant would like to address the request, now's the time to do that.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks for the nice summary and the intro, Courtney. My name is Atana Ossu. I'm one of the applicants for this project proposal. My husband Paul is right here. And our builder who will be taking on this project, Justin with Evergreen Builders is here. And we're just here to answer any questions that you all might have. There's extra copies of the application if anybody would like to see it. And just excited to be here and actually finally have a proposal for you to review. Third time's a charm. Yeah, thanks for providing the time. I know you said you have aggressive agenda, but we're happy you've been here and happy to answer any questions.
I'm sure there will be a few. Okay. Thanks. At this time, is anybody in the public, online or here in the room, want to address this application?
Hi, my name's Chris Mulaney, four oh six Nortagen. I'm not across the alley, but sort of. And we think it's a great proposal. It's way better than the eight, or however many of those were apartments that were going to be in there. I think it's not going to impact the neighborhood at all. It'll be a great addition. And I especially like to see the lighting that it's, you know, because our stair, our bedroom is on the alley and it looks like there could be the correct kind of lighting. That's going to be wonderful. So we're excited. Can't wait to smell bread in the morning.
Anybody else want to address it on?
Chelsea, too. She's in the North Hauser. I, we purchased the lot directly next to them and also in full support. I think that is a great addition and helps keep Main Street for retail and food and bev while we can keep our light industry off the, off to the side route.
Congratulations on your victory.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else want to address the board? Anybody online? Last chance. Anybody here in the room want to address that application? Anybody online? Okay. At this time, and you mentioned there were no, there's no written comments, right?
No, I had one person come and look at it, but they didn't have an official comment, but they liked it.
Okay, at this time, comes back to the board here and we will be asking questions either to the applicant or to the staff. Marie, would you like to start?
Yes, I'd love to start.
Okay.
I'm finally happy, I'm the other neighbor. So finally happy to have, I, I really think it's a great thing to have a commercial down there, you know, all of us working to make the block a better place. And just really excited to see two new faces down there. So Eric and I combed through it and we think it's great. So my vote will be yes.
You have no particular questions on the application?
No, we went through it this afternoon and I have no questions.
All right. Teresa, would you like to go?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. They won't hurt. Sorry. I wondered about the, the lighting is wonderful. Of course, that's where I go first. It's down, it's very good. It mentioned using five thousand Kelvin lamps, which is brighter than what we have in our streetlights. Three thousand Kelvin is what Northwest Energy uses for street lamps. So would it be possible to be a little more, like, can you interchange the lamps in those fixtures that you've chosen? It's a great choice. Just it would be great if they could be three thousand Kelvin or less so that we're not really brighter than, than the daytime sky.
Yeah, great details. Thank you for that. We've chosen that light fixture for just the downward projection and how it illustrated the downward projection.
It's wonderful.
So, yeah, I don't have any specific need to choose that.
Yeah, which is what they're.
From the brand, but same style and same downward projection.
Wonderful, thank you.
Are you going to be that?
Three thousand?
Three thousand Kelvin. And that's actually part of our lighting.
Yeah, okay.
It is, it's an existing regulation.
Do you want to add that to condition six?
Sure, I think that we probably should.
She wanted to add that to condition six on the lighting?
The lamps, the fixtures are wonderful, but if the lamps, the bulbs, they'd be three thousand. I have one other question. I might need a little house understanding. This is the only other concern I had at all was the third rental, the rental space. There would be no way of, I won't believe I saw any report, maybe Courtney can tell me how this works. That third tenant, how would we understand that it's a good fit with the neighborhood other than your own discretion? You may not be there someday and the new person that moves in might want everything and anything under the sun in there. We don't want it to become, you know, I just don't know how it's controlled. How, how would this third tenant be selected? And we, we understand that your businesses would not be a nuisance to the residential nature of the, of the block or the area, but how do we know what's coming? Or how would you choose that?
I don't know.
So when they, when they have their recommended third tenant, they, they can reach out to me to see if they fall, if that business falls under light industrial, which would be approved under this permit application, or if it's even like a lighter, you know, a different, a loud use. Anything beyond that, they would, it would have to come back through conditional use for review. But so we're doing this under the assumption that anything that goes in there would be light industrial and approved under this permit.
At their discretion?
Yes.
Nobody else in the city?
No.
But they have to follow the conditions of?
Right, right, right. So, I mean, that's not as problematic. I mean, it's not, I just needed to understand how that works, how that, how that happens.
That it? Jeff?
I just, I had a question on, on the under findings under consistent with the Red Lodge twenty twenty growth policy. There's a statement here, Courtney, that I wasn't sure what the intent was, so I just need clarification. And it's the second from last bullet that starts with, during the hearings for the twenty twenty-two zoning regulations, discussion and debate about acceptable use regimens in the various zoning districts were conducted by the planning board and city council. The adopted use regimens for conditional use may or may not be appropriate in the particular location. And I'm just kind of wondering what the intent or meaning was here.
Yeah, well, this, this finding, I think, has been in every single conditional use staff report since I started. And I just updated it to say twenty twenty-two. I started doing that, I think, when I started. And so what that statement is basically trying to point out is the, the nature of a conditional use review and that the planning board has the ability to deny something if it's not deemed suitable for a particular location. So, and that's why it's conditional use. Yeah, it's, it is oddly worded, I agree, but it's.
I had the same question, Jeff. Anything else?
I just, I guess a question on the, the building material itself. And this is probably to you, so what, can you give a little bit more information in terms of what the material for the building itself, how it's going to be constructed or in construction and what the siding material would be?
Actually, you or Justin?
Yes, sure. Board?
Morning.
Identify yourself for the recorder, please. We know who you are.
My name is Paul Ossu. I'm the other partner on this project. Question was directed toward the building and what it's going to be made of. The structure of the building will be a steel beam kit, similar to what Red Lodge Jails is constructed on two twelve. Then the outside will be steel siding around three quarters of the building to the two sides and the back. The front will be wainscoting with the steel, and then above that will be half log siding to make it look a little bit more residential, to match some of the buildings that are in that area with the awning over the top. The awning will be supported by wood beams and the roof should be steel.
The other question I had was just looking at the site plan or the elevations on the, on the north and south sides. It's basically this mass wall without any windows. And I guess I'm kind of wondering about the ability to sort of break up that mass by adding a couple of windows on it.
Yeah, particularly on the north side, there wouldn't be any problem. On the south side, we should be about ten feet away from the backside of the Lloyd's building. So we can put a window in there, but you shouldn't be able to see that side of the building really to begin with. But on the north side, we can add a window or two to that side.
And the landscaping, I was just, it's a good landscape plan. And I also like the way the stormwater is being managed. I just had a question in terms of the choice of juniper versus something like shrubby saint foil or something that's a little bit more flower.
Well, we're totally open to anything there. We hired an architect to put that together for us and those are the things that they suggested, but we're very open to changing any of those plans. You don't have a favorite?
Oh, I had, Al.
I'm going to go to Jen first, okay? Hey, Jen, hope you're feeling better. Do you have any questions?
No, this also seemed pretty straightforward to me in compliance with C2 zoning use. So, all the questions I had have already been answered, thank you.
I, I have to say this is well put together, I appreciate that. I, I just have a quick question of clarification. Under your conclusions on page nine, I think was under consistent with Red Lodge growth policy. The second bullet says the proposal for the new commercial building at this site is consistent with a growth policy. Now, on page eight, under findings on the second bullet, they had a commercial section of growth policy could be interpreted to encourage the limitation of the new commercial development, other than. So it doesn't, and one you're kind of vague and the other one you say it is, so which is it?
Well, I mean, it's a little bit of both because the growth policy does kind of, again, that's also a longstanding finding. I did tweak it a little bit because I, it used to be, it used to sound more that it's saying that this isn't, this is discouraged, and I don't think that's what it's trying to say. But it, it's really trying to say that it's, we're trying to encourage commercial development in commercial districts.
I, I just want consistency in these reports.
Yeah, it's just.
Somebody was going to come in and read this after us.
Yeah, it's just, it's just worded a little funky, the, so that's the finding from the growth policy, but the conclusion is that it's, it's consistent and that it is in an area that, that has longstanding commercial use in it. So this is compliant with that.
And again, because we've had this issue before, and we'll probably have it again, on the language about the conditional use permit may be transferred to another party or user without prior express written consent. That is under the, under the conditions of this, of this review and approval, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, any other questions come up? Jen, are you okay? Okay, anybody? All right. Anything from the applicant?
Uh, they use smaller, it's like a window to the north side and the change in plans, is that something that we need to resubmit? Or is it just a change in our plans?
You want it as part of the conditions or you just?
We usually add changes like that into the conditions for the windows. I mean, you can, when you submit your building plans with those in there, then I can just check that off.
We have to have them in the conditions of this approval?
We usually do add when we've like changed window sizes and we, we usually do amend the conditions or add in a, a condition saying that.
So when we come to the approval of the application, we want to say conditions as amended. And you've got the amendment.
I would, I would specify the amendment to how, make sure that what I have is what you, match what you have.
Jeff, declare on that, please.
Yeah, I was going to suggest adding a condition, I guess it'd be 16 if we have a condition on the lighting. So it would be conditioned, condition 15 would deal with the lighting, condition 16 would be adding some windows along the north side of the building to break up the mass of light wall.
I have the light, the shall not exceed 3,000 Kelvin under condition number six, or would you prefer it a separate condition?
She just amended it number six for the lighting.
Okay, so then it'd be condition number 15 for the, for the windows.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
You know, I guess on the, on the landscaping, I don't think we need a condition there. I guess that's just my recommendation maybe is to take a look, closer look at the species and.
Excellent.
Try to, try to a little more diversity.
Anything else?
That'll be it.
Okay, anything else from you, Courtney?
Nope.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing on this application. I need a motion to adopt or deny the staff report.
I agree to adopt staff report, RLCU 23-0-1 and RLDR 23-0-5 as findings of pact.
Second.
Any discussion? Jen, you okay?
Courtney, Courtney had alluded to changing, that there was an error that shouldn't say any buildings over 2,000 square feet instead of three. I'm assuming that's, we're voting with that amendment?
Yes, yeah, and it will be in the minutes with the amendment.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Victor Olson?
Yes.
Battles?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes. Okay, now we need basically two motions, one on the conditional use and one on the design review. So we'll take the conditional use motion first.
I move to approve the conditional use permit for Red Lodge Originals Townsite, Section 27 Township 7 South, Range 20 East, Block 56, Lots 10 and 11. AM subject to the following 15 conditions.
Second amendment.
Second. Conditions as amended?
Condition, yeah, conditions as amended, it said.
Yeah, okay. Marie, seconded it? Oh, okay. Got that hearing on that area. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Victor Olson?
Yes.
Battles?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes. Need a motion on design review?
I move to approve the design review permit for Red Lodge Original Townsite, Section 27 Township 7 South, Range 20 East, Block 56, Lots 10 and 11, AM subject to the following conditions. Those conditions are listed as amended, 1 through 14 as amended, damming condition 15.
Okay, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Victor Olson?
Yes.
Battles?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, that concludes our new business. Now we move into old business. Courtney, you have on your STR zoning regulations review, discussions with Andy Scaffold. Want to leave us off on that, what we're doing here?
Sure, well, after the, the last city council meeting, we had talked about, you know, re-reviewing what was passed by the planning board. There is discussion that the planning board didn't know what they were passing, which, you guys know what you're passing. But since then, I had a conversation with Andy and he had some concerns and some questions. And so this is just a good time while we are re-reviewing the STR zoning regulation amendments to also have that, you know, hear some concerns from some of our developers and property managers.
Okay, so they're going to address that?
Yes. And I saw, yeah, they're right there.
So typically the way we do this, you're Andy?
I am Andy, yeah, Andy, welcome. Thank you.
Typically the way we do this is we don't get into a conversational exchange. You, you tell us what your thoughts are and then we'll come to the board and, and try to address them. And then if we have questions, we'll come back at you.
Sure.
I, I try to avoid the back and forth because then I kind of lose control.
Sure.
So go ahead and tell us what your concerns are.
Sure, okay, my name's Andy Scaffold, I'm with Zoran Development, I'm the managing member there. And my address is 202 Houser Avenue South. I appreciate you guys taking time and putting me on the agenda tonight specifically. So I am the person behind Alpine Basin, I've been here before, it's been a while since I've been here for our approval for that project. So I thank you for that. I've had some conversations with city staff multiple times with two city planners and city clerk. And it's relating to the STRs and the regulations and that I keep on verbally being told that our Alpine Basin project is grandfathered in, which has been our expectation the whole time, even since when I got approval for the project originally. And so I asked for that in writing last week, both to city staff and our attorney, to the city attorney. After multiple phone calls and emails, we haven't got a response. So I'm here in front of you guys and hoping you can help make a determination because your proposal is in conflict with what we have currently been told, both on the record and privately of what is going on with the short-term rentals and the zoning requirements. As the new proposed short-term rental zoning overlay has significant disadvantages to our Alpine Basin, along with a lot of the other city components. But primarily I'm focused right here for Alpine Basin and I would make the request to you to correct the proposed zoning map if that goes forward, back to a non-restrictive portion for Alpine Basin, as we've been told and has been noted on the record numerous times throughout the last year and a half, at a very minimum. I have some other comments, but I'll save those for the public forum if you guys would like me to do that. Or I can tell you all kinds of different information that I would like to.
I just wanted to focus on Alpine Basin.
Sure.
Okay, so if your comments are specific to Alpine.
They are.
You have the floor.
So, I would just like to be given what we were told and what has been presented to us and what was approved by this board when we first originally started the project. And it feels like we are getting more and more restrictions that are coming after the fact, after we've already committed to the project and our customers have purchased properties up there and it's not the expectation of what everyone has been told, both publicly and privately. So I'd like that corrected and then I can save the rest of my comments on that document for the next.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I think we can answer your questions pretty quickly. Want me to do that, or Jeff? Basically what happens here is, as you've mentioned, we're going through some discussions, some debate on the STR issue within the community. And a lot of that's in flux and you're going to hear more of that here tonight as we go into our allowed use tables. And I hope we can address that. The planning board has made recommendations to the council and the council is now has that before them. Regarding your situation, on November 30th of 2021, you should have a copy of this approved document. You have this.
I'm not with you tonight.
No, but you were, you were given it. And in it it stated all the conditions of which you agreed to. And those conditions reinforce some of your concerns, is that that's the document, it's the record within the city. The language in the STR proposal to the city has grandfather language in it, in terms of existing STRs. That language, to my knowledge, is not in dispute with the council. So I think the grandfather clause is, is there and is solid. I think what's happening now, there's a lot of back and forth and opinions and so on going on in STRs and that may be confusing issue. But in terms of the Alpine Basin, we are of record of what we approved, the conditions of which we approved it. And, and our minutes reflect our discussion on the STRs. So as far as I'm concerned, I think you're, you're fine. Jeff, you?
Well, the only comment I would make when we reviewed this, this proposal, there was no mention of STRs or there's no approval that this board gave that any of those units would be or would not be STRs. I think that's up to the individual property owner at whichever time they want, whatever use they want to apply. If it's as a residence or as a second home or as an STR, then it's up to them to go through whatever process or in terms of regulations that are in place. So I, I think it's, it's worth clarifying that we did not consider whether any of those units at Alpine Basin would be STRs or not. That's not part of, was not part of our approval process.
I do recall the conversation when we asked the question about long-term rentals versus STRs and that's reflected in our minutes. And you told us that you were selling to vacation homes and, and probably STRs, but you did not see long-term rentals as, as an option, if I'm recalling that correctly?
We have, we're a neighborhood of full-time residents. Snowbirds, second homeowners, family compounds and some investors. We're all of those.
To Jeff's point, you would follow under the city regulations of STRs and the zone appropriately. So I mean, that's where you lay. Jen, do you have any comments?
Yeah, sure, I do. So I, I will say, I think it's important to reiterate that there, yeah, that this, when Alpine Basin was approved, there wasn't specific discussion of STRs. I, I do want to clarify for the group regarding the allowed use table that we're going to, that we're discussing and the, and the fact that there were concerns on council last meeting. Because it is the case that if we change zoning based on the overlay, based on the URD overlay, that the grandfathered status applies to the current STR business license. And so if the zoning changes in the overlay, such that it's not principal use anymore, which is proposed, which is what, what city planning board put forward, then when those, if those units turn over and there's a new owner, then that new owner wouldn't be allowed to have a principal use STR in that zone. And so I think that that is the piece of this that if we look in the meeting minutes when we were discussing putting, putting this STR allowed use table forward to council, that was the piece of it that I think that we as a community, or we as a, as a board, didn't discuss the ramifications of in any specific detail. And so that's just, that's the piece of it that I think is, is worth re-reviewing and why, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Can I clarify that?
Question, go ahead.
This gets to one of my points. And that's why I wanted in writing from the city in further details is because there's so much misunderstanding and there's a lot of really major issues that can come into play. Not just from the planning commission when you approved our project, but from the city clerk when the STR first regulations went through, we were told to give all of our addresses and Alpine Basin was, was all of our addresses. If they use those for STRs or not, those were all included for approval for STRs. The details in the regulations matter. And they matter for people that are living here now, but they also matter for people that are going to live here down the road. And I'm focused tonight about Alpine Basin. And so that's my request again. I still want those approvals in writing. Part of that comes from the planning commission here. Part of it comes from the short-term rental department. And that was our request to the city attorney, which we have not gotten any response back, so.
Have any of the units applied for an STR license yet?
Yes, so we have roughly half of the units have.
Have applied for license?
Have applied for license.
And have it been granted?
And they have been granted. There hasn't been any issues receiving them.
Okay.
Our residents are concerned about their investment in their property and that if they choose to want to rent those, if they go through the regulations and the rules, that they have the ability to do that. That's what we were told, that all of our residents would have that ability to do that. That's why I'm here to make sure that happens. But we're not just only short-term rentals. We have a lot of full-time residents there. We have a lot of snowbirds. So that's not what our whole project is about. However, there are several people that want that. And that's what we were told at the last time the STR regulations went through. And we want to make it get that.
Oh, can I clarify something Jen said?
Yeah.
So, so the urban renewal overlay, it does allow for them to be used as principal, but through a conditional use. And so part of the concern here, and I think it is a good idea to get it in writing because we have been telling Andy that there would be grandfathering there, is that that development was approved through conditional use. And so the short-term rentals would be considered pre-existing because they've already been reviewed for conditional use. And then even if they sold, if they're grandfathered in, even if they're sold, Alpine Basin would maintain, be able to maintain a certain number of licenses, which would protect that ability for them to continue. They wouldn't need to go through another conditional use review because they've already, in theory, have gone through a conditional use review. And so they are allowed as principal short-term rentals there.
What he's asking for is something like that in writing over authority of signature. Do you understood what you said?
I understand exactly. And that's what I request what you're after.
That's what I meant. And that was my understanding as well. The issue here is, and we're going to talk about this and maybe it doesn't get as grim as Andy. The planning board and the STR committee and others spent over a year reviewing this from all kinds of sources. It came to the planning board. The planning board took those recommendations, thoughts, and focused on what was just zoning. There was other things that weren't zoning, but we just focused on the zoning. And after several meetings, public meetings, we made a series of recommendations to the council. A lot of it had to do with regulations, lighting, noise, all that kind of stuff. And that seems to be doing okay. Now we're reviewing the allowed use tables. And there's been a lot of controversy on that. And so tonight, what I'm going to ask the planning board to do is have a motion to ask the council to eliminate exhibit C, which is the Allowed Use Table recommendation, and refer it back to us so that we can address better and communicate better some of the concerns that maybe we didn't do as well as we should have. Maybe some misinformation out there that we need to address. There's been a lot of opinions stated that aren't factually based. And we need to explain better why we did what we did. And we need to do a better job of that. So I'm hopeful that the planning board will make that recommendation. It'll come back to us and we can sit back because we're reviewing the whole allowed use table now anyway. And so we tried to, I want to say shortcut, but we tried to get the STRs done and so we could address everything else. And it all kind of turned into a mess. So that's what we're going to try to do tonight. And so that we can hear better, understand better, and also maybe other people can understand why we did what we did or why we recommended what we recommended. Because there's been some misinformation, partial information, okay?
Fair enough.
So I kind of got ahead of myself there. That's where we're headed. But I want to try to calm the waters a little bit here.
I think that we're getting a little. That was the first, first item on my note.
And now we're going into a new administration, a new council. And so now we're in a transition period. And I'm not sure whether we're going to have to back up and bring the new council up to speed or how that's going to work. So it's complex.
Very much so.
But we're, we understand your issue. And I hope we've tried to address it for you tonight to some satisfaction.
I appreciate you guys speaking about it. And then hopefully I can get some action from it. And we would appreciate that very much.
Am I, I'm speaking for the board here. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it's true. We can reexamine it and, you know, get more information, you know, discussion, a better understanding. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's really up to the city attorney to try to resolve whatever this language is around grandfathered in and all of that. That's not something that we can help with. And then also, if we could separate out from this resolution, the outdoor advertising, move that out ahead, that would be something really good and solid.
But you know, the point I'm trying to make is we're listening. But I'm not sure people are listening to us. We're listening this way. And we have to do a better job of justifying or explaining why we did what we did. Because when I've had casual conversations with council members and community members, like this conversation we're having right now, they kind of go, oh, okay, I kind of get it. I may not agree with you, but I get it.
You have a difficult job.
Sometimes it's more difficult than others. But if Courtney, you feel comfortable with putting something in writing what you just explained to him, is it accessible or?
Yeah, I mean, because we've been, we've talked about it. And I know he's talked with Danae and the licenses and how those are managed, that city council ordinance that addressed property management licenses. That was, that was something like a concern that Danae had. So there's, there's not just me involved here. There's Danae and I think getting, I didn't realize you had asked Denison for that. So I can talk to Denison and try to get something.
We're just helping getting any responses and it makes everyone really nervous. And what's triggering this whole conversation is your additional land overlay zoning map is what triggered all of this. And there's other underlying issues there, but it's a huge problem.
Like I said, you know, sometimes there's unintended consequences and we try to.
No. Who said that?
Unintended consequences? Okay, I'll give you credit, but I say it all the time. But again, I think these types of conversations are important. And so that's why I kind of want to bring it back to the planning board. Let us take a look.
If you guys are listening, can I just give you a few?
Sure.
Feedback on this? And it'll probably save us all a lot of same, a lot of time because I think I share a lot of the same concerns that a lot of people here do.
Sure.
The zoning overlays are a very tricky thing to do for a city, especially with a broad of a brush is what was done on this last proposal. This needs a ton of study, a lot more than just what the short-term rental committee was presenting. There's tons and tons of issues that come up with this. You're choosing to, by implementing these additional zoning restrictions, you are creating property values to go up and down, not just on one property, but half the city. That's a huge problem for people. You have all this grandfathering language that really is not sorted. It needs to get sorted, in my opinion. It needs community feedback. There needs to be level heads. There needs to be forums for this. Just a couple of situations that pop up. And there's hundreds and hundreds of these stories of different people because everyone's in a different scenario. But as a developer, I can tell you what I see when this happens is it makes me not want to do more business here because every time I try to do something, something changes dramatically. Not just little changes, but major changes happen in the city that shouldn't be sweeping changes happening constantly. I think that's an issue. But just on our Alpine Basin project, because I'm very familiar with it and even our project down here, things like I wouldn't be able to rent my own unit up there because I don't occupy a home if I'm in accessory use. So how you do those overlay maps in grids with primary versus accessory, there's a lot of different people that will not fit in the same code. So my own project, I wouldn't be able to build a home and while I'm trying to sell it, rent it out because I don't occupy it. It's, it's a property I'm just building. So that wouldn't be qualified. Or a customer of ours that is retiring in two years but wants to build his home here now, which is a real scenario that's happening up there right now, he would not be able to rent that out until he can move here full-time in two years when he sells his medical practice. That would be excluded from that overlay map. There's so many of those kind of scenarios that will be for different people. And then it's the grandfather clause with the exception of coming back and having to reapply for a conditional use over and over and over again. There's nothing guaranteeing that property to the next person to have the same use. My project down here, for example, I bought a vacant building. It was my first project in front of this planning commission. It was sitting vacant for a couple of years. I found a reuse for it, invested a bunch of money. We have a brand-new building right downtown and not a blighted area anymore. And that property with this new zoning overlay, I wouldn't be able to sell it as the same purpose because it doesn't fit in the same zone. So it's, that's just two things just from what I've done in the last couple of years as projects in town. And there's hundreds of these stories around town. And what you guys do with that overlay map is a really big deal.
And the things that you've just mentioned, the examples you've just mentioned have been brought up time and time again. And how do you fit it and how does it work? And, you know, you're trying to balance, you know, maintaining property values. I keep hearing, well, we're deflating property values. And so that's part of the zoning challenge. So all I can tell you is that our ears are open, our eyes are open, and we're trying to accommodate all parties in this without. Our, my rule is do no harm. And honestly, we're trying to do that. And that's like, I think we need to pull it back, take a breath and.
It needs a lot of study. And it's just, it's a really big change.
But the other part of it is, is that all our meetings are public. And I can tell you, when we went through a lot of this stuff, this room was empty.
Can we take the podium after Andy, please?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to do a hard.
Yeah, I wanted to.
So, but we hear you, okay? And so Jen, do you have anything you want to add to this before we move on to the next topic?
I was under the impression that before moving on, we were voting to take this back or?
Well, that, when we get into our next item, you're going to hear that from me.
Are we having more discussion from the?
We're going to have our discussion, yeah.
I do have a couple of things to say, just in terms of, I do want to also acknowledge that this board, I wouldn't fully agree with the assessment that we rushed any of this through. I do think that the overlay, there are particular things about the overlay that I'm glad we're going to go back and revisit. But in terms of the whole allowed use table, a lot of this here, we spent, you know, four meetings, maybe five meetings on. And a lot of it just puts STRs in compliance with the other uses for those, for those zones. And so I guess I just wanted to emphasize that I do think we spent a lot of time on this. And I do appreciate that most of this is not really in dispute. I also would reiterate that that, the questions regarding grandfathered in language regarding Alpine Basin is a question for council and not a question for planning board. But that being said, the zoning overlay, I'm glad that we're going to look at that again. But I don't fully agree with the assessment that we rushed STRs, conditional use through. I don't think that's true.
I'm not sure that was made. I think, I don't know that, I don't feel like we rushed it. We just need to take a little more time with it, so. Jeff?
I just want to make a clarification. The overlay is specific to the U R D. And it really doesn't apply to anywhere else in town. It's specific to the U R D district. So the comment that was made relative to the building downtown, that's still within a commercial zone and it's still.
Right.
The zoning that applies to the downtown commercial C four district is still applicable. It's not an overlay to that other than the historic overlay.
Right.
And that's been in play for, in place for years.
Right. Okay.
I'm still trying to mentally sort it all out.
Okay.
On yes, our STR planning decisions. So we've spent weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks.
But everyone's spent more than time.
Yeah, for sure.
Teresa?
Yeah, I mean, the last week.
I'm just asking, I'm specific to Mr. Stowall.
Yeah, the mention of the U R D, you know, being done, changing things all the time. I know it really, unfortunately, when that came up for conditional use, Alpine Basin, the U R D was not yet approved. So yes, things do change. They change all the time. My property changed between the time I bought it and we built. And so you deal with changes in the city. And yes, the planning board, staff, anybody that's involved has a, has a job to try to do what is the best for everyone, most parties. You know, you can't do, you can't please everybody. Try. Am I last?
Say, but that's the last unintended consequence?
I would like to respectfully disagree and put this on record as I've been putting it on record for what, the last six months? I believe, in my opinion, it was pushed through quickly. We did not do enough research on it. There was many people in here, over and over, telling us what we needed to do. I don't believe we listened correctly or researched correctly. Unintended consequences is the understatement. Total overreach, self-motivation, self-serving. There's certain arrogance to it, out of touch with what's really going on in this town, what really pays the bills in this town. And I have said it over and over on record and being the only one that voted against it. I think it's prudent and very important to come back, really look at it again and learn these lessons. But when it comes to Alpine Basin, you have more unintended consequences to recuse that specific area in this overlay. The systemic problem here is the overlay on top of the STR legislation that we were a part of that went through there. But in my, in my opinion, having sat through all these meetings, this has been completely pushed through and not researched enough by true professionals as far as people knowing this business. And we haven't listened to people that do know this business, so.
Okay.
Mine's strictly for Alpine Basin.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Jen. Sandy Conley, 307 Haggen Avenue South. Grandfathered in. So there were 60 units. So there were 60 units proposed in Andy's. They're not all built yet. The ones that aren't built would be conditional use in the U R D. So they're not going to get grandfathered in. The only ones that will be grandfathered in that currently have a license, okay, which is how many are sold, 38?
Oh, so their license?
Well, how many are sold?
Sold 31.
Out of 60.
31.
So 31 out of 60 have sold, and some use them and some don't. But the other 29 then would not be able to get a short-term rental license without paying $500 for a conditional use permit. So I think that's what Andy was kind of going for, is the definition of grandfathered. That's existing short-term rental licenses. The other issue that's already been passed on short-term rentals is those licenses don't transfer to a new owner. So if somebody up there sells their short-term rental, then the new person has to pay 500 bucks for a conditional use permit that they might or might not get. So there you have property value differences. And I think those are the unintended consequences. I understand why this was in the U R D, and because it was a vacant lot, you have 60 new homes coming in, so there's a lot of tax revenue for the U R D, and that's why it was in the U R D. So.
Okay.
Can I address that? May I address that?
Sure. Then I'm going to move to the next topic. I think we've stated what we're going to do. We're going to revisit. If we're going to try to explain what we're doing, then we'll go from there.
So the, that's the issue is the grandfathering, and that's what we're trying to put in writing, is that the 60 units, all 60 units, were already approved through a conditional use permit. And so they would be grandfathered, even though they aren't existing licenses, they would be grandfathered because of the conditional use review that's already occurred. So that if they wanted to use it as a short-term rental, they wouldn't need to go through, even for the ones that aren't built and licensed yet, they wouldn't need to go through that process again. The number of licenses, that is why Danae added that clause in towards the end of the city council ordinance, because she wanted to make sure that if you're using a property management company, that company has the ability to retain a specific number of those licenses if we reach that threshold. And so even if we reach the threshold, Andy's property management company, which they're required to go through if they short-term rent, will have that assurance through that clause that Danae added. So those were the things that we're, we're trying, we're working on addressing those.
I have a question on that. So with the conditional use, well, I guess because it is conditional use, it does convey with land, right?
Yep. Yep. So if, so if someone has a short-term rental and it sits vacant for 12 consecutive months, this is true for any business. Any business that sits vacant or unused for 12 consecutive months, if they wanted to continue to use it after 12 months of disuse, they would have to come back and do a conditional use. So as long as it's continuing in the same use, without that 12-month gap, you can continue that use without coming back.
So at least, for instance, just so I can make sure I know, if one person buys it, does an S T R, keeps their license for like a year, decides they don't want anymore, or decides they move into it, don't use it for a year, and then if their kids get it later, and like after they pass away, after they were also, their retirement years with that kid have to go back and get a conditional use because-
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are there going to be repercussions, let's say, from grandfather, in writing grandfathering in? The question has to be asked, Andy. I totally agree, to be honest with you. But what repercussions are we going to have through other HOAs unintended when one is grandfathered in, because there's lots of, you know, lots of people know? So how, how is that going to affect us? I think that's something we have to look at, too. It's this ripple effect.
What I'm going to do now, we've addressed the Alpine Basin. We've tried to explain what our plans are. So I'm going to close this informal portion of our meeting here and try to bring this back on, on track. And contact me anytime you want for clarification, and we'll try to get this in answers. I can tell you that, we hear you, and we'll try to make sure we're-
Appreciate your time.
Communicating. We may not agree, but we'll tell you why we're doing what we're doing, and so we'll go from there. So now, I'm going to go to our last item on the agenda, and that's to review our allowed use table subcommittee. Before I do that, I'm not sure what the process is, but I would like a motion from this board to recommend to council that in their next, in their first reading of this resolution, 202301 amended, that they refer Exhibit C, which is the allowed use table portion of that, back to the planning board for review.
B, B, B.
Or C on my document.
Is it U R D? B the table?
Is it C or B?
B.
Is it C?
Yeah.
All right. Exhibit B, I'm sorry, Exhibit B, the allowed use portion of the S T R, back to the planning board for review. If that motion is-
I think it needs to say Exhibit B, boy, and C, cat, because Exhibit C is the overlay, and it does have use limitations on it that refer to what we're talking about.
I stand corrected, Jan. I just want to refer Exhibit B back to the council.
The planning board.
Or do you want to do both?
I think it needs to be both, because Exhibit C is the urban renewal district overlay, and it has use limitations regarding STRs written on it.
Okay. I stand corrected. I need Exhibit B and C to refer back to the council.
Can you have a question? So looking through that, one thing that I would say maybe A as well, because if you look, number seven, the item goes into the principal and accessory use, and that's under Exhibit A.
No, I'm not, I'm not agreeing with you on that one. I just want to do B and C. I let the council deal with A. Do I get a motion on B and C, please?
Before I make the motion, I just want to make sure that since we'd already passed this on to the council, from a process standpoint, does it need to be, does the council actually need to take the initiative to refer that?
Probably, but I'd want to give them the impetus to do that. I'm going to recommend that they refer it back to us. How's that?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the appropriate way to go, to, to say that we would ask them to review the resolution in front of, or the ordinance in front of them without-
Yeah.
Exhibit B and C.
Right.
And just look at the short-term rental zoning regulations and the outdoor advertising regulations without the allowed use table and the overlay.
And by referring B and C back to us, any reference to it, then, then A is waiting on whatever we do there, right? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we recommend to the city council that they refer Exhibits B and C back to the planning board for further consideration and review.
And we need to make, identify a resolution 202301 amended. Right.
As, yeah, as, as appears in resolution number 202301-amended.
Right. Second? Any discussion, please? Jan, you okay?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
DeBenedetto?
Yes.
Foizie?
Yes.
Richter Holton?
Yes.
Battle?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Blummer?
Yes. Okay. When we discuss this, and we have a subcommittee, can we announce the subcommittee meeting, meetings so that people can attend those?
Yeah, if you'd like. I mean, it would be nice.
The members of the subcommittee are Sandy Conley, Lisa, Jeff, you, and myself. And so if we can publish when those meetings are going to be held, so people can come, because I want to, I want to get all, like, I'll take all the bullets. And then we want to make sure that when this item is on the planning board agenda, it's somehow itemized.
Yep.
So that we get, everybody gets a chance to shoot, okay? All right. Want to give us an update on what we're doing on the allowed use committee?
Hey, we've basically gone through the items that are in the various allowed use tables and trying to consolidate them. And look, look at the different uses underneath residential, lodging, services, manufacturing, warehouse, storage, agriculture, infrastructure, transportation, retail, restaurants, recreation, culture, civic and institutional community uses, and temporary uses, temporary structures. Those are sort of the main, main headings. And where those come from is basically if people will look at underneath each of the zoning sections identified in the zoning document, there's a table. The table that, tables there that basically specify the current allowable uses by each zone, as well as accessory uses, as well as uses that will be, will require a conditional use review. So just to basically revert back to the S T R discussion, some of the designations that we placed in there relative to whether they would be a principal use or, or not allowed, goes back to some differences in the zoning for being consistent with our existing zoning. In other words, in R1 and R2, we do not allow multiple-family dwellings. Consequently, we structured, when we looked at the S T R, S T R part of that, we wanted to be consistent with that existing, with existing use, allowable uses. So that, that explains some of the differences in, or some of, when you see Exhibit B, allowable use tables, and you see it just in isolation, you have to understand that some of those designations are basically following through from where we would allow multiple use, multiple family versus not allow multiple families. So we wouldn't allow a multiple-family dwelling unit for an S T R if in that zone, we do not allow multiple-family units already. So that's some of the consistent, trying to retain, maintain some of that consistency is there. The other thing that we've, we've done with each of these uses is, is developed, gone back and researched, and developed definitions for each of those. And that's kind of the, the status that we're at right now, is looking at definitions, going, looking at various sources and consistency with what other communities are using as definitions, as well as standard land use definitions, and, and bringing those forward to update our definitions in terms of, of different uses.
Courtney, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, yeah, I think one of the benefits of, of taking back Exhibit B and including it with our totality of the allowed use table updates will help sort of demonstrate this isn't directed towards S T R specifically. This is something that planning and zoning is responsible for, of looking at different zoning districts, their purpose and intent, how our growth policy wants us to treat different zoning districts, and we do this for all uses, and we're identifying new uses that we haven't identified that needed, you know, we need to clarify in our zoning as times are changing and situations are changing. So I think this will be good to kind of demonstrate this all together, rather than it being separated out. I see initially, we thought this would be better since it was all part of the S T R committee recommendations to do allowed use table, but I think it will be better that we look at them in conjunction with an allowed use table update altogether.
Teresa.
I agree. I think it'll be a lot less confusing, and it, it'll help people to look at zoning holistically and understand those relationships with where, where there's principal versus, you know, one unit versus multiple units and accessory or, you know, accessory versus principal as well. So I just think it's going to be a much better view than, kind of way to understand everything together.
Thank you. Courtney sent out the draft of kind of where we are under the various categories to the planning board members. And the reason we did that is to get your input. For example, did we leave anything out under services? Did we leave anything out under worship facilities? Do we leave anything out under professional? Are there some things that you think should be moved from one category to another? And so hopefully, we had a chance to look at that. So I'll go around the table. Are there any of these categories that the planning board members think are in the wrong spot, or should be in a different spot, or should be added or subtracted?
Oh, did I get that? I don't think that was sent to me.
Was it? Was it?
Yes, it's a link to the table, to the subcommittee.
Is this recent?
It's the same, it's the same one we had at our meeting.
Oh, I left that set. Is this recent?
It's the same one we had at our meeting, after we left our meeting. So we assumed you already had it, because you helped build it.
Right, it's just recent. I thought it was recent.
No, it's the same one since our last. I wouldn't do that.
Unless you guys changed something.
No, probably, anyway.
Did you change anything in that meeting last week?
No.
Okay.
We had some, we had some discussion about personal care services. Should daycare be there, or should it be someplace else? And I, I think we just left it there under services, right?
Same with landscaping?
Landscaping, we, we moved under agr- landscaping services, we moved under agriculture.
Under vehicle services, you need to add rentals.
What's that?
Rentals.
Rentals?
Car rentals.
Oh, okay. Um, where am I?
I should have put a page numbers on there.
Vehicle services, we have repair sales, gas stations, and you think we could add rentals?
Why don't you don't want to add car rentals?
Oh, okay. And Marie brings up a valid point, is, and the definition, sometimes we will include examples that may not be listed specifically, you know? That definitions is an ongoing project. I think we'll get this done by 2020. We're, we're working on it. Anything you want to add, Jeff?
No, I can't, can't think of anything.
Teresa?
It's a pretty intense process, I will say that.
It's a long way to go.
When's our next meeting? Have we decided? We meet on Thursday mornings at 8:30, but I'm not sure when our next one is scheduled.
We didn't settle on that. I'm going to have to-
Kind of have to, uh...
Okay, when you pick a meeting date, somehow we need to get the word out. So we'll get it out somehow, put it on.
Yeah, I'll share it.
Yeah. Again, you're just welcome to come and observe what we're doing. We meet for an hour regardless. Anything else, Jeff?
Yeah, I was just, I was just, the reason I was hesitating is I'm trying to think when Thanksgiving's coming up.
We've got a week.
We've been doing it the Thursday after this.
What's that?
We've been doing it the, the week, like, Thursday and a day after this typically. Oh, but you're right, that would line up Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yeah. So it'll be, our next meeting could possibly be the 30th.
No, our next one would be the 16th.
The 16th would be our habit, what we've been doing.
Yeah, the Thursday, the week after the, the in-between week.
Oh, the 16th of November would be our next one.
Yep, yep.
At 8:30?
Yeah, we should double check with everyone.
We're all here.
Yeah.
Once that becomes official, we'll let everybody know.
Yep, I'll get, I'll get something out.
Okay, um, move the track here.
I, I guess I will kind of say because it, we've clarified this in the subcommittee, not every single one of these is going to be listed out in the allowed use table. Some of it, like outside, will be included in the definition. So unless we, like, unless the board thinks that something needs to be separate because the, the zoning would be separate, then it would be split out. But the intent is that some of these major categories include other uses. We're not going to overload our allowed use table. We, but there were some glaring, um, like, personal care services is something that hasn't been in our allowed use table. And it's hard for me to tell somebody when they come and say, I want to open a barber shop. It's hard for me to point to an existing use in our table. So it, yeah, I think you get, I think that you made that clear, but I just wanted to iterate that.
And in the meantime, if the board members have looked at it and come up with something they want to add or subtract, Jeff is our chair of the subcommittee, so lay it on them.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
Um, that subcommittee which I'm not on, I would like to say to remain cognizant of the fact of fact versus perception. So the perception is, is that this was, all, all came about because of the STRs, which I believe, but that to not get into, well, this is just another angle to get what we want by not saying it's STRs, but really, so I'm just saying that that's the perception of the public and we need to be cognizant of that.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, that that's what you believe the public's perception is. But this truly did come out of all of the things that were not listed within our table that Courtney has been growing for and through time had nothing to do with STRs. Like, like she said, look, where do you go, where do you point for a bar, when we want to open a barber shop, where does that fall in the use table?
Yeah, and this conversation really started happening when we had the, the seven-unit short-term rental complex. And I realized our current allowed use table doesn't really separate out the different types of STR, you know, developments and...
There was a couple of things that came up front, you know, marijuana, all those types of things. And so that, one of the things that Marie said there is, one of the things that troubles me is perception is often not reality and we have to better do a better job of staying with reality and address concerns directly, but anyway. Okay. Moving on, any staff communication?
Yep, so Cody and I are planning a, the downtown plan is open. I think, I haven't gotten updated numbers since last week, but we already have about 80 responses of the last week. I think there's more now. There is, there's a chair in front of it. But there is a QR code and a link for anyone if they want to scan it and do the survey. We are planning on November 30th, having a sort of a open house, public meeting at the Roosevelt Center from 6 to 8, where we'll have posters with some of the questions that didn't make it to the survey. We'll have posters so people can write in answers to some of the additional questions, have more just conversation, layback conversation with anyone who wants to give more input on our downtown plan. But, so again, that's November 30th. And then I am seeing if I can get a table for the Christmas stroll to have some more outreach at the Christmas stroll. We're going to, the, the original plan is to keep the survey open through the end of the month, but since the Christmas stroll is pretty early in December, we're going to keep it open a little bit longer and give people an opportunity through the Christmas stroll to continue to fill out the survey and provide any other feedback and recommendations, things that they'd like to see in our downtown plan.
A couple of things on that. Talked to Sherri Weimer about getting a, she's doing that right now. She's probably beautiful.
I, I emailed her today.
And then the other thing is, can, could one of you show up or at least, um, email that application to the RODA? Because I think we meet Monday. Is that right, Sheila? Yes, I think so.
Okay.
So that would be good to have that all in front of us, I think.
The survey, you mean, that you...
The survey. I don't know if you have Jade Haskins.
Yeah, I do.
Sorry, who do you want to send it to?
Jade.
Business line.
Yeah, business line.
Courtney, come in here for a second. Can you, if, if we have like a flyer or something about the November 30th date, can we, um, can you see if Lonnie can put that in the packet for the next council meeting? Because I'd like to be able to take a minute to bring it up. And it's just another way for, um, to get the word out so people will fill it out.
Yep, yeah, and I have flyers too, if anyone wants to take a flyer.
Perfect.
Question, I, I guess, when was the survey? Is that open now?
It's open now, yeah, so at the, so we made a couple, there's a post in there, I think an email, I can't remember what I did, for Halloween. And so I was at the library during the trick-or-treating event and handing out some information and, and things like that. So it officially started being advertised in the paper or on the, the paper's website and...
Did it go Google? The Google, it's through the...
I think, I thought I put it through the Google groups when I, when I was posting for the...
I got it somewhere. I'm not sure whether I got it to Google or Facebook.
Red Lodge debate.
Huh? Red Lodge debate or, you might want to check and make sure it goes out through the...
Yeah, I'll double check because I, yeah, sometimes I get distracted and then things...
Is it on our webpage?
Uh, it is on our website, so there's...
When you, when you, when you hit Red Lodge webpage, it should be right there.
That is one thing I should, I can improve is making it as a, like a news, like, right on the homepage because there is a separate site for it or a separate page for it. Um, but that's a good comment, I should do that. But there is a web advertisement for the Carbon County News and I think it'll also be in the paper. So all that started early November. But, I mean, before it officially opened by, by Halloween, we already had 50 responses. But people are seeing it, which is great, and I think we'll get a lot of great feedback.
One of the reasons, reason I was asking is the, the only, of the survey that it was posted on Facebook that was posted by somebody not associated with the city. So, so I, that just kind of raised the red flag for me is, are we, are we getting the word out? Does everybody in the entire community understand or know what, what's proposed and what's going on? And if there's a survey available, I think we, we really need to make sure that we really do a good outreach.
Have we determined what number, with, of responses we need to get before it becomes kind of a legitimate?
No, I mean, we always hope for more people responding, but I think in the, when the urban renewal district, when we did that survey, I think we had, we had a couple hundred responses. The short-term rental committee had a couple hundred, I mean, third of them, nine hundred. A third of which were even in accounting.
That's a pretty good response. Okay, anything else, Courtney?
Nope.
All right, um, our last item here is we're going to turn the meeting back over to you all. Hopefully you have some comments, direct them to me as the chair. Try to keep them under three minutes. We're at the end of our meeting. If your comments require a response, we'll respond at some point. It may not be tonight. You'll be heard, so. So I open the floor. Anybody want to address the board on any item of interest?
Jen Caffey, North Platte, owner, operator, AAA Red Lodge Rentals. I also sat on the STR Advisory Board and I believe it was the very last minute meeting that we gathered, the very last official meeting. And it was suggested, and I believe Jen suggested it, that the STR Advisory Board make a suggestion to planning board that the allowed use tables be looked at. That was the vote. It was not the STR Advisory Board voting in favor of further STR restrictions through the allowed use tables. And I would like to make that point clear and for the record. I appreciate your willingness tonight to pull back and take a further look, deeper dive on the unintended and intended consequences of adjusting the allowed use tables. I agree with Andy that you don't have an easy job. I can appreciate your attention to Andy and Alpine Basin and the financial impact that this could have on his particular development. And I appreciate him having the floor tonight to say things, quite frankly, that I've been saying for the last two years. And so I take some offense to the suggestion that this audience has been sometimes just empty because when at all possible, even putting aside personal engagements, I make myself available, I have made myself available to the Red Lodge area community foundation when they were addressing the STR issue. I had made myself available to serve on the STR Advisory Board. I applied. I have made myself available at so many meetings and, and in Ace Hardware when people stop me and ask for clarification. So I would ask that the same concern the board has for the Alpine Basin development, that that same concern and attention be directed towards other professionals in Red Lodge that could see a huge impact from further restrictions on STRs. And I know for sure that I stood up at one of the planning board meetings and said, should you implement further restrictions on STRs through the allowed use tables as well as the potential of a satisfied cap, it will catastrophically impact the business that I have owned and operated for 18 years. And I would say that our business, without a doubt, has probably contributed up to half a million in resort tax collections for this city. I can't say that Alpine Basin, no offense, Andy, has collected that yet. But I tend to say that I would like the consideration of other professionals in the room to be just as of the same value. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep, next, anybody else?
They're like, they're just laughing at me like, you know? Chelsea Tewan, 803 North Hauser. I will second that motion and then also, not that motion, but that emotion, I should say. But I'd also like to thank you for trying to bring this back. I, I genuinely appreciate that. I do, and no offense to Jen, but I do feel like it was rushed and grand. Like, a lot of time has gone into it, but that doesn't mean that enough time, right? So again, appreciate you for bringing that back into consideration. I do have some concern, again, as I mentioned before, having Exhibit A be a consideration on this because reading through here above Exhibit B, explaining what Exhibit B is, in Exhibit A, you have seven short-term rentals as principal and accessory use. And I think that that needs to be looked at because there's few questions that it raises for me out the gate. So looking through the current STR zoning, things that have been building and getting sculpted over a long time, a lot of things that was, put a lot of focus on, is it a unit, is it a house, is it a parcel? And it gets a little messy again back here with the principal and accessory use. So specifically, it says home, 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 but it doesn't refer to parcels. But also really appreciate some, and I know you guys are going into definitions, when you're going through this, a lot of consideration for when principal structures and what principal use means, because can I give you my definition? Tell me, do you...
I'll do it.
So, so we threw like, I went through all the definitions today just out of curiosity. And like for principal use, the main use of land or structures, like, I'd really be curious to figure out how you guys designate, designate what a principal structure is. Is it by size? Is it by location? Is it by, well, they use this more often than not. It'd be nice to have that clarification so we're not getting frustrated out there in the public. As much clarification we can get, the more we can work together on it. So, yeah, just looking at those definitions specifically, because we know that we have homeowners that are concerned specifically on, they're in C3, they don't get to have an exemption. And I guess, I suppose they would, if they'd be grandfathering in the conditional uses. Would we have to get a conditional use if they're already like using it?
Yes, sorry, I'm not...
So I'll just double check on that. But specifically, they have a place in C3, but they own two units. They're two separate, like, taxable properties. They're within a townhouse development, but they're not, there's still technically two units on that parcel. So making that cleaned up and clarification would be huge. And I'll try and keep this a little bit short. I know I'm going over. But another piece that really would like to consider is, again, really making that grandfathering language extremely clear because that is something that is going to affect a ton of people. And it's something that us as professionals need to be able to explain to people correctly so we're not giving them false information or high hopes and then to have the city squash them down. While you're doing that, one thing I would highly recommend considering with any changes you make, I still don't think you should have the allowed use table or STRs in the allowed use table, but grandfathering with right of survivorship to where those grandfathering rights can be taken down generation, generation. You can have legacy properties for families. Specifically would like that to be in there. And then in terms of the allowed use, I do feel that it is silly to have STRs in that allowed use table specifically because STRs, and you can say it in your own zoning right here, single and two-unit rentals are considered to have the same impact consistent of a single-family dwelling and home occupancy. And they are allowed in all zoning districts. And so specifically, I think of an STR, it is a home. It is a house. We treat it the same. It's residential in nature, so having a different designation for it just because it's a different type of occupancy within it, I don't feel is necessary. And you're still getting the same effect of a single-family home with benefits to the city through taxes. So that might be...
Thank you. And I'm, I'm taking notes so that...
I see that, thank you.
We'll address these issues at some point, maybe, maybe not tonight.
No, I appreciate it.
Sandy Conley, 307 Haynesville. The STR Advisory Committee did a survey, had 966 respondents, which is good for a town of 2,500. Seventy-nine percent of them said short-term rentals aren't a problem, and we've spent another year on them, restricting them and changing everything about them. So I'm hoping that the survey that we're doing for the downtown businesses in Red Lodge, we actually pay attention to.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I just have a very short statement here to read.
Good, excuse me, for the...
So I'm Joyce Barrett, limit 609 North Cooper. I'm not great at public speaking. I'm a local business owner here in Red Lodge, homeowner, and I've lived in the community for over 30 years. I was born here in Red Lodge and my mom and dad were raised in this community. I find it interesting that our city wants to limit business opportunities here in Red Lodge. This is a very sleepy town with most downtown businesses struggling to make it through the winter months. Short-term rentals are a vital part of our business community. Guests stay in these places to have a more comfortable home feeling. They go downtown, eat at the restaurant, shop in the local stores, and support our local economy. We compete here in Red Lodge with neighboring communities that have thousands of... We compete here in Red Lodge with neighboring communities that have thousands of hotel rooms. We do not have enough hotel rooms here in Red Lodge and we depend on all the short-term rentals to add to our local economy. Owners of the short-term rentals have fixed up their homes, use a local contractor, electrician, plumber, painter, landscape company, lawn maintenance, and the list goes on. The guests coming in stay in these places, use the local beauty salons, gas stations, restaurants, retail stores, coffee shops, river flow companies, horseback riding, and more way there in town. I do not believe that we should limit the property rights of homeowners. Our business benefits from all aspects of short-term rentals. They buy furniture, decor, lamps, and on the flip side, when the guests come to town, they buy souvenirs, jewelry, and more. The employees of all the businesses that short-term rental support then come in and spend money in our store. That's how the local economy works. We don't have enough hotel rooms here in Red Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have one question. When you have the committee meetings, are you going to allow public comment? I guess there's no...
Well, the committee, uh, I'll address that. The committee meetings that like this meeting, we try to be respectful and get input without going off the rail. Um, if we start to go off the rail, then we'll haul it back. But as long as we're respectful and on point in any meetings that we're involved in, we want that input, that answer your question.
So in a subcommittee meeting, the public can interact?
Uh, as long as, we're limited to an hour because we're, the people have other obligations. We meet in the mornings and so, you know, yeah, the answer is yeah, we want to hear what you have to say, but we want to keep, keep things on track, if that makes any sense to us, okay?
Go Dave, go.
No, I, I agree with that. I just, I'm just thinking until we, we meet for an hour, but the topics that we're going to be covering may or may not be of interest. I mean, we don't cover...
Well, the allowed use, the, the, the allowed use subcommittees not be talking about the total package, not just STRs.
Right, yes, that is clarification.
Yeah. Okay, Dave.
Steve Westwood, Kane Circle. Um, I was on the Planning Board, serving with a lot of you for four years, so I'll, uh, quote Al here and try to condense this out. Uh, Al has a saying that there comes a point when everything's been said, just not everybody has said it. So I'm gonna try to restrict my comments down. But, but another comment he made tonight, um, that I do want to kind of go back to was, was do no harm. Um, and like I said, I was, I was part of this board for four years, I was on City Council for four years. I've now spent six years looking, studying, reaching all sorts of places I can to do everything we can to help encourage developers to build long-term type housing. Um, and when we're doing that, there was a comment that was made earlier, it was kind of fun looking at my comments, like I said, I almost predicted kind of the thing in my train of thoughts, but the comment that I want to go back to is, is just not good to establish a reputation of changing the rules underneath property owners' feeds. And so going back to, to that unintended consequences. As, as things come back in visit and as we look at the next couple of years of trying to make some serious strides into housing for our workforce, let's, let's not make that challenge more difficult by creating a feeling of untrust amongst developers. I think that's something that can hurt us and I just want us to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir?
Yeah, my name is Dennis Dirks, committee chairman. Uh, I live at twenty-five fourteen Old Way in Billings.
I'm sorry, what was the last name?
Dirks, D-I-R-K-S.
Okay.
We have a rental property up on twelve twenty-nine Lazy M Circle. So I come here, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate you guys backing us of the individual owners because, you know, we made a decision to come here five years ago with long-term plans and short-term plans to have a rental property that possibly we could come to retire at. So I really appreciate you guys opening it up. And I had a whole list and I would like to know who to address it to so I could send a, a formal letter.
If you're in your HOA, I would first send it to your chairman of your HOA because I know the, the HOA, I addressed the HOA at the Country Club, uh, States about STRs and I know they're working on it. Uh, so they were doing something within their own HOA. But then I, if you want to, in terms of copy and somebody in the city, I guess you'd send it to Courtney.
Okay, we're in a unique situation because we have independent HOA with two minerals. So it's kind of an interesting...
I don't know what they've done, I just know that they were planning to do something.
Are we involved if we're at the golf course to be in that HOA?
I would, so, yes.
Four and two?
I talked to the president of the HOA of Red Lodge Country Club of States and they said that they were not planning on doing anything with short-term rentals. So I know that there had been a rumor, but I talked to the president and he said that there were no, nothing on their books, that they're going to change...
So then it would fall under the city and so...
So it would go straight through the...
Go with Courtney.
State law prohibits the HOA from making those changes, Senate Bill three oh one about four years ago.
Thank you.
Are you telling me that the HOA cannot make their STRs more stringent than the city?
That is correct. An HOA, according to state statute, cannot make any use of land that was legal at the time of purchase illegal. Now, that does not apply to grandfathering situations, so it could impact new, but, but HOAs which do not have the same due process as city processes which have two public readings and ordinances and all that stuff, HOAs cannot take something that was a legal use of land and make it an illegal use of land within the HOA.
Well, that's another whole can of worms.
I live at Rock Creek, for instance, I know that the Crutchfells used theirs as a short-term rental. And so when I live at Rock Creek, said you can't do that anymore, they're grandfathered in, so they have continued to use it. But if somebody buys your place, then they can't use it as a short-term rental because of your HOA.
Well, I don't want to go there. Our sub-HOA has short-term rules that are, that are more strict than the city.
Yeah, except for the people that are grandfathered in.
I'm sorry?
It can be more strict than the city. Specifically what it is...
But he's saying I can't change it.
What he's saying is if it was this way when you bought it, you can continue to use it that way until it's done. And that's what that rule is. It's not that you can add that, it's you can't further restrict somebody based, and like, for instance, exact example, if someone bought the house thinking that they could use it as an STR, they can continue to do that.
This meeting was way informal, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, any other comments? Anything online?
I just want to... Marcella Manuel, um, I live at Fox, but I have business at five North Broadway. The allowed uses table, limiting short-term rentals to only certain residential zoning districts, creates some unintended consequences that I don't think you're really thinking about. And Jody pointed this out at the City Council meeting. When you look at R-three, for instance, R-three, if you think about it, over by the elementary school, south towards the, on White Street and out to the south end of town, a lot of the residents, a lot of the neighborhoods in that R-three zoning are half-size lots. So they're thirty-one, twenty-five square feet, they have a very small house on them. They are probably the most affordable homes in all of Red Lodge. And I know in going to four months of short-term rental committee meetings, some of the things that were brought up at those meetings was housing's not affordable anymore because of short-term rentals. But when you say the only permitted zone, R-three, where you can have a short-term rental is in R-three, that's exactly where you're concentrating short-term rentals, is in those areas that are more dense. And the issues that were brought up at short-term rental committee meeting were parking, so you have a half-size lot, you basically have one parking space, but you're saying that's an area that it's okay to have short-term rentals. You've had noise complaints with something that people brought up. Again, these are houses that are that close together. And so when you look at those tables, by concentrating short-term rentals as a permitted use in those zones, you're creating unintended consequences, including, you know, potentially making housing less affordable if that's the only place that you can have a permitted that, rather than accessory use for short-term rentals. So that is a tremendous block in your accessory use table.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Marcella Manuel.
Okay.
So please, I think you need, yes, I think you need to look at that table in its entirety and really, you guys, you just put in, the City Council just voted in a twenty percent cap. Let's give that some time, let's see how that plays out. Putting another layer of regulation on short-term rentals right now is not necessary. We are close to the cap. There was not, I mean, as Jen pointed out, this zoning table issue did not come up in the short-term rental committee meeting until the very last meeting, very last thing. So for them to say it was a recommendation coming out of that, that was last minute. So, my comments, thank you.
Any other comments?
Tony Chupin, eight oh three North Hauser, uh, owner, operator of Red Lodge Reservations. Um, I would like to reiterate what our colleagues, Andy, Jen, and my wife Chelsea have stated before. Uh, the other piece that I would like to state is more of emotional appeal. I do thank you very much for, uh, bringing, uh, uh, back, uh, the discussion on the allowed use table. Uh, as you're considering it, please consider this. Uh, this would greatly affect our ability to replenish our inventory as STRs start to drop out. As, uh, our owners retire and move into their properties, as folks get out of the investment for whatever reason or another, we greatly respect our ability to be able to, uh, refresh that inventory. In doing so, it would mean a slow death to my business. Um, it, it would be, it wouldn't be immediate, but over, over time, it, it would mean that we would no longer be able to operate our businesses. We have hopes to operate this and grow as we, as when we purchased this business two years ago. Uh, this business has afforded me, uh, amazing opportunity. It, uh, you know, it wasn't necessarily the business that I, I thought I would get into, but it was a lifelong dream to own a small business and operate it. And I'm able to live that now. Please, as you're taking this back and considering it, don't kill my life and dream. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Well, I thought, uh, I have, I have a little different perspective. My name is Mark Schubert, uh, I've been at Red Lodge forty years. I live at ten twelve South White. And, um, I know it's complicated. Everybody wants to have housing for people. But the STR versus housing, uh, I, I work with clients that have rentals and, um, you just can't believe how many people decided, "I'm not doing a long-term rental." It's complicated society. People have a bad tenant, they can't get them out, they get destruction. I don't blame, you know, not all tenants are bad, but everything is complicated. Um, right now, I think downtown is pretty healthy. We have all these STRs, so people, that's what they want when they come to town. They, they don't want one room. We don't have enough hotel rooms anyway. When I travel, sometimes I stay in a short-term rental and if, if my son wants to come, I mean, it's a desirable thing. Well, gee, we have a good economy, so we need more employees. Well, it's kind of a conflicting thing. Our housing seems to be getting tighter. It is getting tighter. But if we, if we choke the business community, there's gonna be less jobs, you're not gonna need housing. Uh, since I've been here, when I moved here, there was a lot of empty houses. People would not rent monthly. They came when they came and they didn't take care of their vacation home when they worked here because there was nobody, nobody cared. That's one thing I'd say about short-term housing, is people take care of their property. And, uh, I don't know, uh, it's, I guess I'd hope we could deal with, if there's noise or whatever thing, you know, we have controls, you know, we have to deal with it. A long-term tenant can make noise too, you know? I mean, we have all kinds of problems. I just know it's complicated. And you try to, you try to control the housing, I don't know, I don't think it's gonna ever work out exactly how you think. Yet there was a way to get more businesses to invest in, uh, well, even like the trust Mon, the trust Mon, uh, is it Land Trust of Montana, they're trying to do some really good ideas to try to get housing. It takes a lot of time. And, you know, it takes money to try to help other people get a home. But, um, uh, I just thank you for what you're doing. But I look downtown and I know there's a lot of planning when we fixed up the street and then I looked at the curbs at every corner, there was a lot of thought and in their, in their peril. What do we say? We just do the best we can.
That's what we're trying to do. Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. Is there any other business to come before us? Jeff? Courtney, I've got our next meeting on December thirteenth.
Yep.
Okay, in the midst, midst meantime, we'll have a subcommittee meeting. In the meantime, I ask the board members to please look over this list that Jeff's committee has prepared and make any additions or corrections to then, uh, get them to Jeff. There being no other business? Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, and so, and if you want me to forward those on to the boards, then you just send it to me and let me know what I can forward to the board. Oh, yeah, yeah, if you want, if you want some of it to be included in the council in the package, I need a, a, a poll on Friday for Veterans Day tomorrow, so they're trying to get stuff out. If you can, otherwise, it'll get... And I can pass it on till we see it, it just may not be in the minutes, but it will be in the next, and it'll be delayed, but at, they will take it to the meeting and move it to the public.